I don't think that's me. I don't know.
Steve Dahl. Brandon Farrell. Jeremiah Johnson. Kathy Klein here. Kelly Kwiatkowski.
Here.
Leah Maves. Derek Nimmer.
Present.
Jim Raymond. Matt Towns.
Here.
And Dennis Pauling.
Okay, great. Next up, we've got citizen input. We did not have anyone signed up ahead of time. Are there any citizens in the room that would like to address the board going once, going twice? It would appear not. So we will move on and we'll take a look at our minutes from November 22nd. Any comments, questions, changes? There we go. Was that Kelly? That's Kelly and Steve. All those in favor?
Hi.
And opposed? Wonderful. Thank you. Treasures report, Mr. Dahl.
Thanks, Matt. I did email Ted earlier with a few questions. Check 8718 to ICE Robotics. Check 8722 to Larson Construction. Check 8749 to Train and check 8783 to NIR Roof Care. And it sounds like, well, besides the bridge, the other three are maintenance contracts. But Ted, did you want to go on those at all?
Yeah, I'll do that. And we've got Jared and Mel today too, so we'll have him reference, you know, some of the details behind three of those that you referenced. First, let me start with three unplanned expenses that we have. Check number 8712 to first apply for $902.21. This is a high school hot water recirculation project along with CES Special Education Bachelor Project. Tying up some loose ends specifically there with the referendum. Check number 8772 to first apply for $1,146.09. This is again related to the high school hot water recirculation project. Check number three, we've got check number 8788 to Quality Door and Hardware for $1,578.12. This is CE Community Elementary School exterior gym seal, gym door seals. This is the old gym, right, Jared? Some water, both of them, water penetrating in, making sure that keeping that floor dry. So those are our three unplanned expenses. The other four I want to hit, three of which I want Jared just to touch on. But the first one here is check number 8718 to ICE Robotics for $6,587.88. This is our yearly lease for our robotic vacuums. Last year, we had five robotic vacuums, if we recall. They really supported some efficiencies, allowing our custodial team to spray all of our rooms each night. This year, we've turned it down to one mainly because the classroom application of those robotic, those vacuums, just what the application wasn't good. The technology would just get stuck if those tables and chairs weren't in the exact place that they needed to be. We've got one environment where they worked really well, or it worked really well, and that's at Community Elementary. So we maintained one of the four. So we did get a reimbursement on the floor that we sent back about a month ago, and this is just maintaining one. What we are hopeful for is that in the future, that this application is a little bit more for the school environment because schools are craving something like this, especially with all the carpet that we have in our environments these days, a lot less hard surface floor, especially in the classroom. So time will tell on that. We do have, continue to maintain, we approved this a couple of weeks ago, is the autonomous scrubbers, which is a huge bang for a buck there because those no longer have to be ridden by an employee, the rest can just go on their own track. So that's a positive thing. The next one, check number 8722 to Larson Construction for $93,461. This is the pedestrian bridge behind community. So we're pretty much wrapped up on that. I'm going to hand this off to Jared. He'll give us a little bit of an update. There's hand railings that just need to be put on, and then we're almost ready for walking.
So there's some custom hand railings that will match the contour of the approaches, so they have to be custom made. So once they get them done, we'll install them right away when we're officially done. There's about $23,000 left of invoicing once we're complete.
I think you're going to be doing the approaches then, or?
Yep. So they did the concrete approaches up to the bridge, so then we'll just have the walkway when we repave the backs next summer. We'll pave right on down there with the concrete approaches.
And then on the other side, it's like I noticed they've bucked the sidewalk pretty good.
No, okay.
I might want to take a look at it. I may or may not have gone down there and gone across.
The number of people are even.
Yeah. Oh, it was very big, Carol.
They get pulled down about every day. So it should be in another couple of weeks, the rail, and it should be finished. So the total with the reconstruct was like 116 approaches.
It's okay, it's thirty.
Yeah, they did a really nice job.
Very nice.
Is that a pre-cast bridge or is it cast deepways?
So it's got high beams that are set, three of them, and then there's pre-cast sections, a number of them that are the deck.
I was thinking like concrete, concrete, salt, pills, keeping that bridge full of ice and stuff like that, you know? We got to make sure we don't pick that thing up in the first year.
Right. We'll be feeling that for a while.
So I have a question. Is it being, officially, it's not open? Is that correct?
That's correct. Just because the railings aren't there.
But is it being used?
It is. We put barricades up, they rip them out every year.
Yeah. Well, when I, when I checked it out, there was no barricades or anything.
I usually have our ground staff in the front.
Oh.
Check each morning, put them up again.
Oh, yikes. That was scary.
All right, thanks, Jared. Two more to highlight, and Jared's going to jump in and give us more detail. First one is check number 8749 to Train for $10,588.45. This is our yearly service agreement for three chillers, community, middle school, and high school. Jared, do you want to talk about, you know, the purpose of this service agreement that we've got in place?
Sure. So for the high school and elementary school, the brand new chillers are very advanced, high technology. Also, we would freshen the people who built them or oversee them, and then we'll have Rick Lard or HVAC guy will be shadowing them as they're doing their surface work.
Great. And last one is check number 8783 to NIR Roof Care for $6,000. This has been a longstanding relationship with NIR for all of our roof systems. So convenient that Jared's with us today. Asked him to touch on the type of outcomes that we usually receive via the service contract.
So NIR comes out and does early inspections. They look for any potential problems, maybe clean the roof, roof drain, things like that. The other nice thing about having the service agreements, if you have a problem, I can usually call them and come with it. That's the other benefit.
It's been a great relationship. Other invoices that you want me to?
I have an invoice, but I've got a question that a couple of weeks ago, there were issues at Community Elementary regarding heating. Is that covered under some kind of a warranty on our, because that's, you know, that's not been, there's been issues ever since, you know, the building opened or reopened.
Because of the controls.
Yeah.
You see, there's still certain bugs when you get certain scenarios of temperature that has to have some adjustments made. The nice thing with Miami, we have a great relationship with them. They never charge us, they just take care of it. Rick, our HVAC guy, he's first in working on the controls, so he can tell pretty quickly when we're going to have an issue. He just calls Miami out, they can either fix it or they're falling or whatever, oftentimes. Sometimes it takes a little bit before you realize the problem is. It's usually overheating lately. scenarios. You have to reset the controller sometimes, things like that. You have to make sure and make some adjustments so that it doesn't happen again.
I just kept waiting for this to show up on the invoices and nothing had come, and I just wondered what our status was.
Yeah, Miami is not invoicing that word.
Okay.
Okay. If there aren't any other questions, I'll go ahead and move for approval of vouchers pending the final audit. I'll second that. That's Steve and Matt. All those in favor?
Hi.
And opposed?
All right, I see Paul France, our lead auditor out there from Baker Tilly. Thanks for joining us today, Paul. I'm going to set the table a little bit. We've got two items, gifts for the holiday season. The first one is the, and Paul's going to briefly review both of these, but the first one is all the audit details that we would typically, that we would typically see every year through a financial audit. The additional one Paul will touch on is just some general insights that we can explore, you know, based on the outcomes that were applied this summer. So all in all, good news. We had a very successful audit. I don't want to steal Paul's update, but, you know, I know we will acknowledge, you know, for a second year in a row, I think it's been so seamless because our lead accounting associate, effectively our comptroller, Steph Marino, Steph Marino, Stephanie Johnson, sorry. Got a lot of Stephanies in this district, by the way. No, Stephanie Johnson's done such a great job in regards to managing our finances throughout the year. So there's a lot less journal entries that occur at the end, just specifically because of her work that happens day in and day out. But I know Paul will touch on some of that. So we're in a good spot. The benefit of having to do this audit as a public school district, we must do these audits every year, which is a great thing because we can evaluate and ask questions specific to our progress as a school district, most specifically the business office, just to make sure that our financials are in alignment with expected outcomes. So Paul, hand it off to you.
Thanks, Ted. Am I up on a board? That everyone in the room can see me?
Yeah, yep. So everybody's plugged in. Our IT guy will put us on a TV for individuals that may not be plugged in.
All right, so I'm going to share my screen here. All right, is that coming through?
Yep, we're good.
Our technology. All right, thank you. Again, my name is Paul France. I'm a partner with Baker Tilly in Milwaukee, and I am happy to be with you tonight to share the audit results. And as Ted alluded to, nothing but positive information to share with you tonight. So our objective was to express an opinion on the financial statements for the district as of June 30, 2021. We have done so. We've issued an unmodified opinion. You'll find that in the financial statement document, so not the pretty cover that our marketing team put on with the audit results, the one that's labeled the financial statements. You'll see our audit opinion in there. Again, it's an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean bill of health. The highest level assurance that we can give to you as your external auditor. What that tells you is that the financial statements are fairly presented within generally accepted accounting principles and that all accounting principles have been applied consistently year over year. Also, all disclosures that are required under governmental accounting standards have been adopted and included within the financial statement document. So in short, when you hire an external auditor, this is the outcome that you're looking to have in relation to your audit opinion. Next page here of my highlights, just a brief look at, look at the financial results, starting in the first column, the general fund. I'll work my way all the way down to the bottom of the page, and then we'll come back up here and revisit a few of the other funds. But the general fund's the main operating fund for the district. It's just over $24 million of revenues, just under $20 million in expenditures. We had some other sources and uses would be, it's a transfer out to support the special education fund. Ultimately, you added to your fund balances here about $800,000. So you ended the year in the general fund with just over $6.2 million. That fund balance is broken into a number of different categories to help you understand how it can be used in the future. The biggest piece of that $6.2 million is your unassigned fund balance, just under $5.7 million. That is the reserves of your general fund. We look for that reserve number, just moving into the health calculation here. We look for that unassigned fund balance to be somewhere between 10% to 25% of your operating expenditure. So you got, when you put together your budget for the general fund, you're just under $21 million. You're sitting at 27% in that calculation, and what that tells me is that your general fund reserves are very healthy. I have districts, again, I give you a range of 10% to 25% where we looked at, look for that to be. I have districts well below 10% and well above 25%. So it's ultimately really a benchmark that kind of identifies if you have cash flow issues at different points during the year. And districts are obviously, your revenue is coming at certain points of the year, and so having some operating cash and reserves is important. And so again, you're sitting in a healthy position there. Budgetary compliance in your general fund, when you put together the fiscal year '21 budget, you'd plan to use $170,000 of fund balance. And as I mentioned earlier, you actually added to your fund balances, you're seeing a positive swing of just under $1 million. We go back up to the top. I'll just briefly talk on these other major funds. The special education fund, again, houses all your special education activities and support services to the tune of about $5.1 million in expenditures, and that's supported both by general fund transfers of $3.3 million and other grant and state-supported revenues. Next column here is your donation fund, Fund 21, give about $1.3 million of restricted fund balance in that fund. Your food service fund has about $95,000 of fund balance and about $92,000 of that is restricted. There's about $3,800 that we mark as non-spendable, and what that tells you, anything that shows up in the non-spendable category is fund balance that just hasn't had an income statement effect yet, meaning that it will in future years, and so that money is not there available to spend. The next one over is your debt service fund. This houses all the debt activity for the district. So any levy amounts flow into this fund that are going to pay for principal and interest payments in a given year. Excuse me. It's about $750,000 of fund balance in that, in that fund that can be used to pay down debt in the future. Last major fund's your capital project fund. This houses the project expenditures specific to large capital projects. So this would be your referendum activity as you spent down that project. This is the fund that housed that activity. And so there's about $500,000 in that fund restricted for future capital projects. The last column is a combination of a number of different funds that we classify as non-major and can be found in great detail in the back of your financial statement book related to those funds. They encompass about $1 million of fund balance at year end. Continuing on to the next page here, just to look at the long-term debt for the district. About $39.2 million of GO bonds and notes outstanding as of June 30, 2021. You have the ability to borrow up to 10% of your equalized value, so about $130 million. So 39 million outstanding gives you the capacity of about 70% or $91 million in long-term borrowing capacity. The other other thing I'll point out in this table is your net OPEB liability, about $2.6 million. That's an actuarial determined liability, meaning that the actuary looks at what could happen in the future. There is no amortization scheduled tied to that $2.6 million, and that will be really paid as you go, as the benefits come up. And you recently established a trust to fund those future costs into the future. As I mentioned before, there was also a second report that we issued, the audit results. Sorry if you can hear my dog bark. You've got to love the virtual meetings when the kids get home. But so we've issued an audit results letter. Nothing out of the ordinary within this document to bring to your attention. We do continue to have one material weakness related to the financial reporting controls of the district. This is, again, a very common material weakness as an auditor that I provide to my municipal clients, whether it's a local government or a school district. Just ultimately, you have outsourced the financial statement process to specialized governmental accountants at Baker Tilly and therefore don't have somebody on staff to prepare the financial statements. And under our professional standards, we need to make you aware of that. Also, during the audit process, we did identify one material journal entry that we worked with, with management to get booked throughout the financial statements and the DPI reporting. But as Ted alluded to, we received nothing but cooperation from Stephanie and Ted and all their support individuals throughout the audit process. Everything went very, very smooth. We conducted the audit remotely again, and I think we've found a good, efficient way to work together to meet the needs on both ends to be successful in that environment. Continuing on in this audit results letter, there's a section, a two-way communication where we lay out our timeline for next year's audit in relation to if there are things that you would like us to do differently, kick the tires harder on, invest some audit time on. We are soliciting your insights and your feedback and happy to have a conversation offline on anything that that may encompass. But that will lay out kind of when we need to know that information. Lastly, there's a section on required communications that we need to have with you as the governing body. I did in this section that we lay out any new accounting principles that we adopted during the, during the past year, which there were none to bring to your attention. I lay out the various accounting estimates that are included within the financial statement document that we evaluated as part of the audit process. They were all clear, neutral, and non-bias, meaning that they were appropriate to be within that document. There's also a section that talks about disagreements with management, which there were none. And truthfully, had we had any, you would have heard from me long before this meeting or receiving this audit results document. And then lastly, there's a non-atest section where we list out the various non-audit services that we provide to the district. Why that's important is at the end of the day, in order for me to give you the unmodified opinion that I mentioned earlier in my presentation, I have to be able to confirm that I'm independent, which I'm happy to say we are at Baker Tilly and happy and privileged to work with everyone at the district. So with that, I'll pause and happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
You said to recommend a 10 to?
10 to 25% of operating costs to have that.
Right, so we're at 27%. Is there any concerns as that number were to rise, or what would be your findings if it continued to rise?
No, there certainly would be no audit findings, whether if you were below 10% or significantly over 25%. My recommendation becomes at that point, if say you're operating at 40% or 50%, is to just ultimately have a fund balance policy in place to understand what is the planned future use of that fund balance. As to why are we continuing to, you know, if it is significantly increasing, what are we going to use this money on in the future? I do have some districts and municipalities that choose to, rather than take debt, stockpile for future projects or equipment purchases within fund balance, and that would be a reason why you could see fund balance go up. But certainly a 27% no concern there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, board members think of additional questions possibly. It was three years ago when we made the transition to Paul and his team, and one of the major accomplishments to that transition is our ability to have that two-way communication over the course of the school year itself or financial fiscal year. That's important to us because then we can ask questions in a timely manner, so that by the time they get on site, things should be seamless. So, you know, it's a great credit to Paul, of course. A lot of the field work was done by one of his coworkers, Matt, and so Stephanie and Matt, you know, appeared to have a great working relationship and just having that fluidity as far as just asking questions and getting feedback so that we can make adjustments if it's required early as opposed to late. So those, one of the major outcomes that we were seeking and we're achieving that with Paul and his team is just that access over the course of the school. You're not just waiting until the end of the race, so to speak. So it's been wonderful. You know, the connection to the fund balance part, it's a really great question, Derek, specific to, you know, what's, what's too much, right? So knock on wood, our goal is to avoid cash flow. So we've got that line of credit established with the Bank of Edgerton. Typically, we've had to use that cash flow, but our last board meeting, we were just under the wire, so didn't need to make a draw on that cash flow last board meeting. The good news is, is we've gotten state aid, so now we're back up against, and we process these invoices today. You know, we've avoided that pulling on that line of credit, which is really incredible from us saving as far as interest. The other thing is we navigate this budget, the budget that we're in right now. You know, we may be leveraging some of that fund balance to continue operations, depending on what happens with the next plan of state budget, state government. So it's, we're in a really good spot to make sure that we can be competitive with our peers from a programming standpoint. That's academically and co-curriculally, but also from a compensation standpoint, when we look at the labor market and trying to be competitive so we don't have the turnover issues that result in unfilled positions. So it's a good spot to be in. But Paul, thank you for your work. There's a lot of information within these documents. I know, Derek, I said you're going to look through this tonight, which we appreciate. But if you have questions, you know, Paul alluded this, one of the great outcomes that Paul and his team provide is, you know, he gets feedback from you early on in the process. Maybe you remember that questionnaire you had to fill. That's great that he's making that connection with board members because ultimately, this document is really what we are easily judged upon when it comes to operations here at the schools in regards to taxpayer dollars. So Paul is always available. If you're not sure how to get ahold of him, clearly I will connect you with him if you have questions going forward. But thank you, Paul. I'm not sure if my coworker Stephanie's joined today, but Stephanie, if you are, thank you for all your support. It's been incredible. Ocean, okay, great.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, thanks, everyone. Happy holidays.
Okay, thank you, Ted.
All right, next to give a brief COVID update, I've been informing the board the past few weeks that we certainly the past three weeks especially have seen an uptick in numbers. They're increasing every week, and as the number of active cases increases, so does the amount of contact tracing that Sandy and our administrators do, as well as the health office staff at every building, too. So they're busy right now. Credit to our administrators for just some of the protocols they have in place. Some of those protocols have actually been able to reduce the number of close contacts. So that that helps. But it's it's taxing, you know, our administrators, there are times where they're looking at video of the lunchroom and they're timing how long kids are sitting next to one another. And I want to mislead the board to think that happens all the time, but it certainly does happen in in instances where it takes time. I know here at high school, Craig spends a lot of time contact tracing.
Well, the time will come when we it isn't the time to relax, relax the things now, because I know it's long enough to fight.
I do think after
Let's see, we took the path, we believe in it, we think it's right, all of the kinds of but we still have
Yeah, we we continue to follow the Rock County Health Department guidelines. I do think after the holidays, at the next board meeting, we'll certainly do an update to see if that trend that we were experiencing now continues. And at some point, as you stated, Jim, hopefully, we can begin having dialogue around lessening some of the restrictions. We're still waiting on the the test to stay. CDC is still analyzing a report, a study out of the UK. They have not weighed in on it officially yet, but my understanding is it's promising and they're seeing the test to stay as a viable option to quarantineing. But as I shared in the Board Weekly, there there are some, it's not perfect. I mean, there's still going to be some discrepancies of who has access to get into school to do the test to stay if we move in that direction, but more to come on that. Yeah, I mean, exactly. It's an accessibility issue. Many of our families rely on the bus to provide transportation, and if you're in quarantine, you can't ride the bus.
I have a question.
It'd be required of a parent or friend to get them here.
Do we have numbers on how many of our five to eleven-year-olds have been vaccinated?
I can get that. It's probably between the twenty and thirty percent range, but I'll be happy to get that.
Of giving access to you.
Uh huh. Be happy to do that. Okay.
Okay, and I'm going to back piggyback on my other request on the five to eleven-year-olds, like percentages for the twelve to eighteen's as well.
Okay.
So we have an idea what what percentage at each level is are are vac are vaccinated.
Okay. Seven thirty to three thirty. Yeah. I would imagine if we go to the test to stay, we'll probably want to start that earlier, too. Yeah. Uh huh. Okay, any other requests or questions at this time? Okay, then the next agenda item is it's really more of a standing agenda item if the board wants to entertain a dialogue around it, but by no means are you obligated to.
Great. See, board members feel like there's discussion needed at this point here. If not, we'll continue on.
Okay, Dr. Weiner.
All right, I phoned a friend for this meeting, Jared. So it gave you a foreshadow of this unplanned expense recommendation here tonight, specifically it's the controls for Yehara. Somebody hand off to Jared, and he's just going to give, you know, we can survive without these controls, but we don't believe it's in the best interest of 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 maintaining, you know, the the effectively the security of of what we've got over there at Yehara. So Jared, if you can just talk about some background of the controls, what their purpose is, and then our recommendation to to install this before the winter months really hit.
So what we have at the we can run things a manual, so the boiler just maintains the temp and the pumps just run all the time. The nice thing about having the GDC controls, which were put in in two thousand and eleven when we put the boilers in, is in the event that we lose pop the boiler, I get a text message that the boiler's down or if a pump's down. That's the thing that without that, we give up. Like a lot of technology, the the Andover controls that we put in are becoming obsolete, so they're not going to be supported in the near future. So instead of replacing the current board with one that's basically obsolete, we're still a large amount of money. We're we're going to look at updating the controls. It's the same brand, but it's the next model. That's something we'll have to do for the other equipment that we have that was put in at that same time in other buildings here. So it'll be a good way to also see how that works with our systems.
How old is that whole boiler system?
The whole boiler system at Yehara, so it's two thousand and eleven is when that was put in. That and pumps in that area. The rest of the the systems yet are like the Univents and and things of that nature are quite a bit older.
And the life expectancy of that thing, of that system, you think?
Of the Andover controllers, I mean, twenty years typically. Sometimes. It is, yeah, we have two boilers.
So what we have is a not to exceed number. So we we did get two quotes. We got NAMI, of course, and that's the the winning bid, so to speak. And then we did get another quote with a group that Rick has worked with in the past. So we're going to stick with NAMI. So that number, we we just put not to exceed because we didn't have that other quote by the time I sent that notification out to all of you last week. We got that quote back, it was higher than NAMI, so looking to move forward with NAMI at that number.
I'll move to approve the HVAC controls at Yehara not to exceed twelve thousand seven hundred.
Kathy and Kelly, all those in favor?
Aye.
And oppose? All right.
Dr. Coombs, Fund Twenty-One for the wrestling program.
Thank you. So I would like to ask for approval for a new Fund Twenty-One activity account for a wrestling program. So the wrestling program just wants to generate some funds to help themselves with the wrestling program for a variety of different things that they purchase throughout the year. They probably did way back in the day, or maybe they didn't. So we're looking to have one. A lot of times the boosters take care of a lot of it, but now we're at the school side as well, not getting rid of the boosters by any means. They're a huge part of what we do.
I just wanted clarification that this is different than a than a booster group. Do our other sports have have Fund Twenty-One?
Some do, some don't.
Some do, some don't.
Yep. Sometimes the boosters take really everything and they're they just take everything and they fundraise and you know, it's from my vantage point, it's six of one, half a dozen the other. The money goes directly to the kids, whether it's an activity account or whether it's to the booster account. It's just the activity account is with the school and the booster account, obviously, that would be with the boosters. So they're just looking to have an activity or a Fund Twenty-One, excuse me, for the wrestling, similar to the other clubs that I've brought forward.
Kelly and Leah, all those in favor? And oppose? Okay, great.
This, sorry. Time of the year that we start looking at next year already. So we have a few class proposals that like we would like to bring forward to the school board for approval, so we can offer them to our students here for the fall of twenty-two. The first is music productions. Mr. Jostin, who has done a marvelous job, may I add, would like to offer music production. Music production is pretty much the way that it sounds, is producing music. Initially, where he's going to be having this class primarily in Kurt Muckaus classroom with the Max, so they're actually making music on something similar to GarageBand. There is a better program out there that he's looking into, but we're going to see how much student support or student requests we get the first few years. If it becomes a very sustainable program, we'll take a look at that. GarageBand is either free or very inexpensive. This is a little bit more costly. So we try to start in the shallow end of the pool so that we don't spend too much money and then find out the course may only run for a year or two because students aren't interested in it. But I love this from the standpoint of it gives us a non-performance class in our band department. Half a half a credit, so it's a one semester course. Any question? No, we can do them all, but if you have questions, shoot them at any time. I think we can do them all. Yeah, any questions on music production? The next step is shop math. This is actually going to be two courses, shop math one and shop math two. So if there's one area I would say in our in our math curriculum that we've tried to shore up over the years, I think we do a really good job at the at the entry level, and we do a really good job at the at the high level, but trying to figure out the middle, upper tier of our math scope and sequence. So last year, we incorporated a college-ready math. This might be the first year or second year. I can't remember first or second year math, which is just a little bit below it's right after pre-calc, right after pre-cal, but before calculus AB. Am I getting that right, Tracy? Okay. So trying to fill in the 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 gaps a little bit, so there's not these large gaps of, okay, I got done with pre-cal, but I'm not a I'm not a math guy. I don't want to go into math, so but I I really want to stay with math for one more year because I want to go into college. So that college-ready math has helped us out a great deal. This area, we think, is going to be very beneficial for our students, especially the students that aren't looking on to go to a four-year institution. They might be looking to go to a two-year technical institution, definitely going into the trades of some sort. This, by what I hear, has become a popular class in other school districts and is very beneficial for our kids, like I said, going into a technical college, going into the trades, going into the workforce right out of the school. So this is shop math one, shop math two. Both of them will be advanced standing courses, so that means that we have articulated the curriculum through Blackhawk Technical College. Both of them are semester-long, so most kids would probably take shop math one and then, I shouldn't say most. They take shop math one and some could take shop math two for that full year of credit, but some could take an equivalency credit as well, because we do have some equivalency math credits. This would be taught within the math department, so this would be part of our math credit. Yep. Yeah, great question. So we're trying to get a hold of Blackhawk Technical College to to firm this up, but we believe at this point it's really a class meant for more eleventh and twelfth graders, not necessarily before algebra, but we see it as you'd go to algebra, maybe geometry, and then you'd get into your shop math one, shop math two. It might be after G or after algebra, but we're trying to shore that up a little bit. So we're the target grade levels would be really your eleventh and twelfth graders. Once you really start to solidify, this is what I want to do when I get out of school, that would be the the time to take this course. Does that answer your question?
Did we have a class similar to this a few years back? I thought that we had something that we were working with.
We have some equivalencies, but not this. No, you're spot on, Derek. You listen well. Nice job. Yeah, so we do have some equivalency courses. Coding is an equivalency for math credit. We have some courses in in our tech ed department that are equivalency for math, and then we also have some science equivalencies. Equivalencies are a little different, though, because you can only have one, you have to have three credits of math in the high school. Only one of them can be through the equivalency. Two have to be through your math department, okay? This is through the math department, so this is not an equivalency course. So this would be more beneficial for those students that, you know, math is not the area they want to go into, but definitely they want to go into the trades. They want to go into the technical college. They want to go into the workforce right away. So that's why we see this as being beneficial for them. So it's really two courses. It's shop math one and shop math two. Great questions. Any other questions? And the last one was brought to me by Todd Babcock, which is a CDL diesel class, trying to get your Class A CDL license. Todd does have his Class A CDL license. He actually drives truck outside of school. And he sees this as a great way for kids to to earn a really good income right out of school. So he brought this forth. So the one question on this is Todd is contemplating maybe retiring. So he just brought this up. So if this is a very specific course to Todd's skill set in tech ed, for me to find someone that would be able to replicate this, looking on the tech ed sector might be really difficult to do. Plus, Todd has some equipment that we would definitely need to utilize it. He would allow us to utilize his personal equipment. So we're right in the middle of, are we actually going to look to put this one in our subject selection handbook? And because we have to make a decision over Christmas break, whether we're going to do that or not. So I'm asking for approval, but I want to be very transparent. This one might not even make the because if Todd decides decides to retire, which I'd be very happy for him if he did, sad for us, happy for him. Hey, maybe, maybe. Yeah, there we go. Here we go. We definitely need CDL drivers in 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 our sector. So this would be something that I when he brought this up, I was pretty excited about it. Unfortunately, he might be excited about retirement, too, and I completely get that. So we're we're trying to figure out where Todd's going to be. If Todd's going to stay with us, we're probably going to definitely run this. If I could find someone that has that in the tech ed department, or it doesn't even have to be tech ed department, it could be any department, but usually there's things that pair well together. English teachers usually don't have CDL license as well. So but if I could find that, that would be outstanding, because this course could be something where kids could could leave here, make really good money driving, whether it's over the road or whether it's quad axles or whatever it might be. Police officer one two. Side note on those three, they're gaining traction. The CNA course is going great. The other two are gaining traction since they're somewhat new. We had to postpone, I think it was the police course a semester, but they're gaining some traction, which is really nice, because, yeah, we we like working with Blackhawk. And just today I got off, was on the phone with Mark Osberger from the hospital. He wants he wants in on a little bit of the CNA stuff, too, because they're having a huge shortage in the CNA field, so.
Now, did I, I'm going to go back to the CDL. Do you have to be eighteen to take the course? You have to be eighteen to get your CDL license.
Eighteen to be take your CDL license. So we would, we would, this would be, I think. Okay, thank you, Tracy. So if you're not eighteen, you're going to be turning eighteen soon, so you can take that class, or excuse me, take the exams. So he has that worked out. To just do eighteen-year-olds would probably limit it too much. We probably just wouldn't get enough kids. But we have more seniors that are turning eighteen now than we have in the past. I would say in the last two decades, more eighteen-year-olds turn eighteen. More seniors turn eighteen than in the past, where they would turn eighteen more over the summer. So I do think it's going to work out time-wise on that. Any other questions?
I have a question. Out of curiosity, what percentage of our students go on to a four-year school or do something in the trades or a tech school?
Great questions. I could ballpark, and I might get really off. So let me find that number out for you because our counselors would know that really quick, and I just don't have that. So you said college, tech ed, and trades. Okay, I'll get that for you, and I'll I'll kick it out. Yeah. And I just don't have that. So you said college, tech ed, and trades? Okay, I'll get that for you, and I'll I'll kick it out. Yeah.
For more advanced. Programs, do we work with the local colleges to allow students to take additional college courses?
Yep.
I I feel like we've talked about that in the past, and that kind of.
Youth options. Yep. Youth options is something that I would come to the board. Like twice, if not, maybe it feels like more often, a year to 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 get approval, because there needs to be approval for that. And that's a great program, because the school district ends up paying for their education to get college credits, which is really nice if kids reach that level.
As well, I think that. Yeah, so we're kind of getting. Meeting everybody's needs.
That's what that's exactly what the attempt is. And this is like when I was talking more about shop math, is just filling in those gaps a little bit more. And then the C D L is just. I mean, we we have so many needs in in the workforce right now. We can't meet them all. But if we have a skill set that a that a staff member has and we can utilize that, that this would be a perfect example of trying to utilize that.
I move that we approve the addition of these courses for the high school.
Kathy, Derek, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks.
Okay, then we have two letters of resignation, one from Alexis Marshall as high school E S P, and then Jessica Foote as the community elementary lunchroom supervisor.
All right, that sounds like Leah and Kelly. All those in favor? And opposed? Okay.
Okay, and then one of those resignations, we're going to ask approval to hire Jessica Foote as a high school E S P.
All right, Kelly and Leah, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
All right, and then lastly, we have a gift, five hundred dollars from the Gift for Kids to the Edgerton High School to be used toward the Tide Activity Day coming up.
Very cool. All those in favor? And opposed? Okay.
I was just going to say real quickly, Tracy, how many families were served in the Gift for Kids exchange last week? Nice. Tracy leads that up for that group, so well done.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you, Tracy.
So you're done.
That concludes my report.
All right, Derek and Kelly, all those in favor? And opposed? All right, folks, we'll see you in four weeks. There's no, next two weeks from now is the twenty-seventh, so no meeting then. So January tenth.